Okay, it's 6:01, so I think we'll go ahead and get started. It's October 27th, and this is the Town Manager's Public Hearing on the Fall Town Meeting articles. My name is Beth Rudolph. I'm the Acting Town Manager. Happy to be with everyone here and my first town meeting in this role. We'll go ahead and get started. So tonight, we're going to review the articles. I will give a brief overview of each article, and then we will open it up to questions. Because we are in the Zoom format, we have a series of panelists here. And then we have everyone else in as attendees. So if we, when an article comes up and I run through the description, if you have a question at that point and you're an attendee, please raise your hands, and then you'll be recognized, and Patty will bring you in as a panelist, and then we can hopefully answer your question. So Fall Town Meeting has 31 articles. Eleven of those are on the consent agenda. Several have actually been indefinitely postponed, and so we'll mention that as we run through as well. First things first, the most important item. The Girl Scout group, Girl Scouts are actually running a virtual bake sale with delivery for the remote town meeting. So if anybody is interested, you can purchase cookies, brownies, pumpkin bread ahead in advance of town meeting, and they have them delivered to your house. The information is here on the screen, and we'd be happy to share it with you as well in an email if anyone's interested. Okay, with that, we'll get to the first article. So this is a standard one. Article number one is to receive the reports of town officers and the Finance Committee, and the proponent of this article is a select board and requires majority vote. Any questions on this one? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to Article Two. Article Two has been indefinitely postponed, so no further discussion on this one. Articles Three, Four, and Five are articles, Planning Board zoning articles that had previously had a public hearing on Tuesday, August 31st, 2021, and therefore will not be reviewed this evening. Article Six was a proponent, was a article regarding a master plan implementation committee. A proponent was the Planning Board. That article has been indefinitely postponed, so there will be no further discussion on it this evening. And Article Seven, so this brings us to really the first main article for discussion this evening. This article is required as a majority vote, and the proponent is the Select Board. The article seeks to amend Chapter Three of the Town of Winchester Code of Bylaws by revising Section One. This article would allow the Select Board to vote no later than December 1st of the preceding year to hold an election on the second to last Saturday of March. So it's basically just revising the time, the election, the time the election is held in March from either Tuesday to the last Saturday of March. Happy to take any questions?
There's, oh, hold on, there is one.
Okay, thanks.
Roger Wilson.
Go ahead, Roger. I think you, when you unmute yourself, you should be all set to go ahead.
About that. So I just wanted to know what the rationale is here.
I can take that if you want. The, this first occurred to me when I was on the school committee, and the school superintendent was surprised to find that we were holding voting for the local election in elementary schools. And she was concerned about security and also concerned just about traffic and parking. And I think there was a kind of dramatic car accident in another town in a parking lot, school parking lot. And it also is hard to have a no-school day, you know, where the teachers just have professional development, and there are no students in the school in March because there are a lot of things going on, including some teacher, parent-teacher conferences. And it's, it gets close and closer and closer. You're getting closer to the MCAS season, where there are school days where a lot of testing goes on and like regular instruction doesn't happen. And it, you know, I had driven by the sign in Arlington saying that voting was going on on a Saturday. And I thought, well, we could do that someday. And then with the pandemic and trying to move things around and learning that, you know, as a rule, the turnout is lower for local elections than it is for general, you know, statewide or other more major elections. It just seemed to begin to make sense to see how it would go if we had voting on Saturday and perhaps had it in a centralized location like the high school. And this was, that was something also that the town clerk had been thinking about for a while to consolidate the polling places into one or two locations, just so it would be easier to manage. And I think the third thing had to do with the technology available in different buildings or trying to get technology to work equally well in different buildings that seemed to be preferable or might be more effective, really. Not just preferable, but more effective and better to be in a building that had really good technology. So Mary Ellen was, was interested in doing this as well. Mary Ellen Ladd, the town clerk, was interested in doing this as well. So this was just to give us the town some flexibility rather than, you know, the Select Board would vote on December 1st to depart from the usual last Tuesday in March. And, you know, if circumstances warranted that. So that's, that's the thinking behind it. It's kind of in the background in the motion book.
So just to follow up, if I could. So the, so the option would still be there to go back to the Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
Sally Dale, I'm going to be bringing her in. She had her hand. Hold on.
Thanks, Patty. Okay, Sally, I think you're in. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Right, so this is not really a question. I just wanted to say that in the motion book on the table of contents, this Article Seven is listed as a Planning Board proponent or listed as, and, and I just wanted to know that.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a typographical error in the table of contents, however, on, in the motion book itself for that article. It does correctly state the Select Board.
No trouble. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, nothing else. We'll go to Article Eight. So Article Eight is a majority vote. The proponent is a jointly sponsored article between the Conservation Commission and the Select Board. This article seeks to designate the conservation, sorry about that, seeks to designate the Conservation Commission as the managing entity for the town forest. Happy to take any questions?
There is none. Oh, wait, yes, Sally, again, hold on.
Not to be a pain. I was just curious. Can you hear me? Yes. Yep, I was just curious about, it says that there's other properties that the Conservation Commission manages. And I was wondering if at town meeting, they will be talking about what those properties are and what they, you don't have to do it now, but, and, but what they also do to manage those properties.
Sure, we can make a note and ask them to speak to that. I believe this, I believe actually that a Select Board member is going to be the presenting this article to town meeting, so it's possible that he can mention that as well.
Right, okay, that's great. Thanks.
Yep. I did just notice in the Q and A that there's, Patty, it looks like somebody maybe is having trouble entering the session. And then there was a question about Article Five. So Article Five is a Planning Board zoning article, and it's subject to a separate hearing. It's not part of the Town Manager's hearing. And I would refer any questions about that article to the Planning Board. They did already hold their hearing on the article earlier this year. Moving on to Article Nine, let's see. There we go. So Article Nine is a two-thirds vote, and the proponent is the Select Board. This article grants authority to the Select Board pursuant to Article Twelve of the Fall 2020 annual town meeting. Excuse me. The authorization granted to the Select Board as part of Article Twelve is, would be amended and replaced by this vote. And the Select Board would be authorized to acquire for the purposes of affordable housing by purchase, donation, eminent domain, or otherwise fee, easement, leasehold, or other real estate property interests in, over, across, under, and along all or any portion of the three parcels of lands located at the corner of Washington and Swan Street in an amount not to exceed $5.3 million. So there's obviously a lot more language here that goes into more detail, but that's the, the main focus of the article. So happy to take any questions that folks have.
Roger has a question. Oh, wow. I don't know where he went to, but Sally does, so I'm going to bring. Hold on a sec.
Okay.
Yep, Sally first and then Pam Court. Okay, Sally, you're in.
Unmute. So my question is, if in asking this question of town meeting, we could have more of an update on the sort of the, the evolution of conversations with the owners of this property about where they're at and where we're at, because I don't really have a clear picture of that. And I'm not really sure if I understand why. I mean, I know there's a background statement, but I don't know why we're having to revise something. Just not understanding.
Sure. Susan, you're unmuted, or you want to take that?
I can take that. The town, well, the Select Board listened to the deliberations during the original town meeting, and a lot of people felt that we should try to negotiate, or the town should try to negotiate with the current owners. And we didn't know much about that situation because there had been a recent sale. And it's one owner. And we did engage a special counsel to talk to his lawyer. And there was a, there were a lot of conversations back and forth. In the course of those conversations, our, our counsel learned some puzzling new facts and thought that more investigation should be done into the value of the property and determined that we should do a new appraisal and that the actual market value of the property was higher. And the discussions really did not lead to a, an agreement. And so that's why we're feeling since time has passed and the property is deteriorating, and it's unclear if we will be able to reach any sort of a deal with the present owner, that we should go ahead and have the amount that we are going to be allowed to use increased to be close to or more reflective of the actual market value and then just move forward with, with the eminent domain taking. Because the plan all along has been to try to, for the town to be a temporary owner and just have this property move forward and be redeveloped as, as a residential, mixed-income, affordable residential project.
So as, as a follow-up, and again, I wasn't really clear about this in the original vote of Fall 2020. How is the decision made whether we take it by eminent domain or that we buy it? I guess it seems like there's a $5 million difference in the two, right?
No, maybe I'm not being clear, but with the eminent domain taking, originally, we believed that the value, you know, you have to, when you do an eminent domain taking, has to be for value.
Oh, it does. Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, so it's in the Constitution. I'm forgetting the actual verbiage, but it is in the Constitution. And we realized that we were not offering the fair market value. And so that's why we wanted the increase to 5.3.
I see. Okay, well, that's really helpful, and I look forward to the presentation. Thank you.
Mike, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, Mike, I see you at that right now.
No, I, I think that was right on, Susan, as long as Sally's comfortable with it. And we'll explain a lot more at town meeting, the process that we went into over the past year. But we'll always have to provide fair market value for the property. One of the things that we didn't know is when we looked at the Registry of Deeds, the purchase price that was on the record for, for the purchase was significantly lower than was actually paid because there was a forfeited deposit from another property owner. So we realized that our number was low because it was based on the, the recent sale. So we had to raise the floor up. But also what the owners were asking for us to purchase for was, was way high. So we, in a sense, are bringing the floor up and the ceiling down so we can really diminish the, the exposure because the parties can always disagree on the fair market value in court. But the process is if town meeting says, go ahead and take it, we go to the Registry of Deeds with an order of taking. And then we have 60 days to provide fair market value to them to, for the, for the purchase price, whatever we determine it to be. So somewhere between what we had been authorized before and what we're looking for authorization now. So it'll be in that window. So it's, it's not necessarily 5.3 that we would sell it at because there's some due diligence, but it's, it exceeds what we had initially thought. And we actually could, we, we thought we could use the ARPA funds for this that came to the town, the $6.8 million, but, and really make up that $2 million difference because we really were, are only passing the property through the town. But we felt that it would be better to have this conversation with town meeting. So there's full disclosure, and somebody doesn't say, well, you bought this for, you know, 5.2 instead of 3.2. And so that's why we're back looking for more authorization. But really what we're looking for is a temporary authorization for a bond anticipation note. So it's, we're really paying the debt service on it. So, and we'll have Jay Gonzalez, our bond counsel, he'll be there to answer questions as well. I think as Mark Reenster, who had done the updated and really thorough appraisal of it. So happy to answer questions.
Thanks, Mike. Patty, I think you had, so there was one other person with a question?
Yes, I'll bring Pam in.
Thank you.
Hi, I have, I have a lot of questions about this, and I actually did the last time, and I didn't ask them. So they don't necessarily need to be answered now, but maybe if they can be answered at town meeting. I, I was wondering if you all could talk a little bit more and explain the process, whether it is a negotiation and then obtain the property temporarily and what the expectations are for how long we'll be holding it, how much we'll be paying on it, what the anticipated profit is that we'd be getting on it. If we had to take it by eminent domain, maybe talking about what the anticipated legal costs and the timeframe would be for that. And also, if there could be perhaps maybe some, if we're going to acquire it and start talking about how it's going to be used, if we can, in a similar way to what we did on the Waterfield lot, establish just for the town's protection, because it's really the, the point of getting this property is in the best interest of the town, to talk about that if the property is definitely going to be used for residential or mixed use, and if it's going to include affordable housing and what those minimum amounts would be sort of in line with what the master plan is and, and how the Waterfield lot decision was made. So those, those are sort of my comments on it. I just, I don't want to see this. I'd be concerned about this going sideways or in an unexpected direction because we didn't have language that was protective. And I also don't want to see this going the same way of, of Waterfield where it, where there's a lot of contention and confusion.
Thanks, Pam. I just wanted to mention that the article does specifically call out that the property is to be acquired for the purposes of affordable housing. And Mike or Susan, I don't know if you want to follow up on any of that, or we can, I'll leave it to next week.
It says for the purpose of affordable housing, but it doesn't specifically say whether they're going to want it to be rental units, if they all count toward affordable and can help put us into safe harbor, what percentage the expectation would be for affordable. So I'm, I'm looking for something a little bit more specific. And because otherwise, it, it, just based on the whole Waterfield debacle, without sort of clearly outlined information, I can see this becoming ugly.
Great. Thank you.
I can weigh in a little bit, Susan, if that's okay.
Sure, sure.
So one of the things that we did contemporaneously with negotiating with the current owners is we established a working group to develop an RFP, which included members of the neighborhood, members of the Planning Board, Select Board. We hired JM Goldson, who, Jennifer Goldson is the main proponent of her company and has done the master plan work for us. And the Waterfield RFP, I think she did the RFQ as well. So she does a lot of work, very familiar with the town. So we have an RFP that will be issued, and it will require, as Waterfield did, that the applicants respond with, to maximize affordable housing. So that's, that's the lay of the land there. So, and it also gives points for mixed use and, you know, other, other parts of the project as well as, or as parking and whatnot. So sustainability, things that we had considered for, for Waterfield. So it's, Waterfield is kind of the blueprint for this one, but in a, in a smaller sense. We also developed it around what we saw the neighborhood supported in the past with the Melanson proposal. So we had an idea what people were looking for, what people were okay with as far as size and development. Just as a reminder, the property is zoned commercially right now, so the owners can't, without the town's involvement and rezoning, you know, really do anything but commercial there. So that's, that's one of the things that restricts the property from, from currently being developed. So we, we would do a local initiative project there with a developer, which is the fancy name for a friendly 40B, working with a developer to, you know, push out the zoning and, and change it from, you know, commercial or at least take down some of the commercial limitations on it. So happy to answer more questions. I don't want to take up too much airtime here. But, you know, it's, you, you never know, you know, if, if things could happen and, you know, go, go sideways a bit. But I think we look forward to having both projects stay on track and get them done.
Thank you so much, Mike. Would it, would it be possible if there's like a draft RFP, would that be something that could be provided to town meeting members so that we have a better sense?
That is impossible, and I'll tell you why. It's, and I, I'm guessing that if you, if you hunt around for it, it's probably the worst kept secret in town. But our council has advised us that based on the kind of fair market value determination that we're, we're making going into negotiations, that putting the RFP out there, you know, would, would expose us to, you know, greater costs in the long run. Now, certainly talking to Brian Zickelli, or I know Cheryl Wolf on the Planning Board was, you know, you know, involved in, well, can, can really give you a sense of what's in there. But it can't be issued broadly, I'll say that much.
Thank you. I believe Roger Wilson had a hand up with a question.
Yeah, I, I want to underscore Pam's point. I participated in, in some meetings on this. And, and, you know, I think the, there should be clarity about, when you say maximizing affordable housing, that's different from maximizing the, what qualifies as affordable housing. And I didn't get the impression clearly that we were talking about a rental development here. And I can't, I can't see any other way of maximizing the qualifying numbers for, you know, the, the 10% or whatever it is. So what are we talking about here? Are we talking about of rental housing development? Because a lot of the stuff I saw didn't, was not rental housing.
Yes, rental housing, you know, it's part of the, the RFP that, you know, we're, we're focused on, you know, maximizing affordable units. It would at least have to meet that basic threshold for us to do a lip there of 25% of the units, you know, being rental. So being affordable.
Wait, you mean being affordable?
Being affordable, yes. But, but, so it could be, I mean, I guess that there's, you know, but it's a, it's a rental unit project there.
So you are talking about rental units?
Yes.
And, and you're not talking about any more than what qualifies for, to qualify the development 100% rental, I mean, 100% affordable?
Well, you get points on the RFP by, you know, how, how much affordable you're offering as part of the project. That's why Civicco really stood out on, on Waterfield is offering really more than we asked for. So, or more than we required. So I think it will be much more favorable in making a determination of who is awarded the RFP, who is awarded the, the proposal, if, you know, if, if they have more affordable units. Now, yeah.
But that comes out of the taxpayers' hide. I mean, the only, the only way a developer is going to put in more units is at our expense. That, I mean, that's the fundamental issue with the Waterfield.
That's not accurate.
I, I don't, I don't understand that. Maybe Roger could clarify the question.
Well, what I'm saying is that to the degree that you're including more affordable units than required to, to meet the, what is it, 25% standard that makes the whole development affordable in nominal terms. To the degree that you exceed that percentage, you lower the return to the town, if the town's the owner, as it is in the Waterfield case. So, you know, if we simply say it must be 25%, then we have the maximum price we can get built into that criteria. If the criteria is the same as Waterfield, we're going to have the same problem.
Well, just to speak to that point, Roger, it's our number one priority as part of the RFP is recovering our investment because we're going to be issuing a temporary borrowing on that. So it's that, the, if we spend, you know, 4.8 million on it, getting back 4.8 million is going to push somebody the, the head of the line. And then it's going to be how much affordable housing, right? The floor for the affordable housing has to be 25%, as you said. So we're not going to take less money than we, we've invested in it. And so that's why we spent so much time with the appraisal to determine really what the, what value we could get back with it. And we looked at a lot of other offers and a lot of other, we spoke to a lot of prior developers, you know, on the project. And so we, we got a sense for really what it's worth, what the market can put out there. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's different from, in the sense than Waterfield, where Waterfield, we, we owned the property, so it had an existing value. This really we see as passing through the town.
Right, so the floor is the ceiling in this case, and it, it probably should have been in, in the Waterfield in order to, to maximize the, the sale price for the town.
So I think we're not here to debate Waterfield tonight, I think.
Okay.
Keep the questions focused on Washington's one.
Agreed, but, but I think Pam's point is that we don't want to have the same kind of problems. We want to be clear on that. We don't want to have the same kind of problems in this, in this instance.
Agreed. And, you know, I'm always happy to answer questions and Susan, Beth, anyone, you know, offline about it. Because I know it's that everything kind of comes kind of quickly with with town meeting. So happy happy to do that, Roger or Pam. I know we'll reach out as well.
Thanks, Roger. So we have a couple of questions in the Q and A, which I'll do next. And then I believe there's two other folks that have their hands raised. So I think both these questions in the Q and A are from Maura Sullivan. So the first question, I'm concerned with the owner suing to stop the taking. How likely is that? So the town has the ability to do the taking once this authority is granted by town meeting. The owner has up to three years after the taking is completed to to file suit. And at that point, it would just be a matter of how much they were owed. So this 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 the eminent domain taking cannot be stopped by a lawsuit. It would just be a matter of any additional financial compensation that was required. And then the next question is, will the proposed affordable housing any include any commercial development? Mike or Susan, I'm not sure what the RFP included, so maybe you could mention that.
I think we were considering that. I think the neighborhood would like something simple, maybe a coffee shop, maybe a, you know, when I when I moved in, there was a convenience store. I don't know if that's feasible, but just something to to kind of be a little more alive because it, you know, it's been a commercial, little local commercial place for so long. But we don't know what the market will really bear and what people will come up with. That's that's part of the reason why you do an RFQ, to see what developers who are involved in this stuff and know the the market better than we do might propose. I don't know if Mike has anything to add.
No, I think that's it. It's in the RFP as something that's desirable and, you know, that we've identified is that the neighborhood wanting. So it should be a part of it again. It's it's a, you know, cost question for the the project. We know from the neighborhood that there's certain height limits there. So I think we're we're looking at maybe a three-story building there is what the neighborhood's comfortable with. So, you know, I don't want to talk about other projects, but when when you're limiting height, then you're, you know, limiting some of the leverage you have for ground level retail and things like that. But it is part of what we did with Maura Songus initially to evaluate different proposals there is that the project will bear the mixed use there. So it it is financially, you know, possible. And so we we made it a part of the RFP. So we we expect that will be part of the the project.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Patty, I believe Anne Sarah was next in the queue with a question.
Yeah, she's on. And you're in.
And you can go ahead. You're on mute, Anne, if you're trying to speak. Okay, so maybe we'll come back to Anne. I think you said Sally Dale had her hand up for a second question.
She taken it down. Sally, do you wish raise your hand if you still have something to any more questions? She's actually off. There she is. No, I got it. I went down looking for you. Yes, I went down the list and then she popped up.
Yeah, no, here I am. At at first I had, this is really quick because I don't want to take too much time, but really quick. I noticed it's a two-thirds vote. And then I remembered we have this voting threshold guidance related to chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020, which has to do with lowering thresholds around certain zoning changes if they relate to affordable housing. But I think, Mike, you answered my question because this isn't about a zoning change yet. It's simply about a financial transaction, which as such is or whatever you would categorize it as, that puts it in the two-thirds category. So I think I answered my own question, which is
Correct. There's no there's no zoning change. It's a just authorization to the board to acquire.
Okay, thank you.
Anne, are you unmuted here? Anne, we can't hear you for speaking. Okay, she says in the the Q and A, there's a 30-second delay. Can't ask a question tonight, sorry. So happy to take any questions in writing that you may have between now and time meeting. Okay, Patty, anything further on Article 9?
No, there's no one else.
Great. Okay, thanks, everybody. We'll go on to Article 10. Article 10 is a simple one, a majority vote. Proponent is the Capital Planning Committee, and the motion is that the capital for the Capital Planning Committee report to be received and filed by town meeting. Any questions there? All right. Article 11, this article is on the consent agenda. It requires a two-thirds vote, and the proponent is the Capital Planning Committee. This is one of the standard articles that we have every year at town meeting. In this case, we're appropriating a sum of money, which is $8,904.13 from surplus surpluses from previously appropriated capital projects. And in this case, it's going to the Building Stabilization Funds. There's a second motion under Article 11, similar in intent, which in this case is appropriating a sum of $23,011.80 from surpluses, and this is going to the Capital Stabilization Fund. So happy to take any questions on this one. Again, this is a consent agenda item. Okay, sounds like we're good there. Going on to Article 12. So there are 14 motions under Article 12. I'm gonna just quickly go through all of them, and then I will come back if there are any questions on specific ones. Article 12 is two-thirds vote, and the proponent of this is the Capital Planning Committee. So this is basically requesting funding for the various projects that have been put forth at town meeting from the Capital Planning Committee for funding at this fall town meeting. So Motion 1 is to appropriate a sum of $750,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund for the main fire station HVAC system for construction, engineering, and all of the costs. Motion 2 is to appropriate $154,000 from the Building Stabilization Funds for the Town Hall HVAC system for engineering. Motion 3 is to vote $24,000 from the Building Stabilization Funds for the McCall Middle School facade repair and restoration or architectural and engineering design services. Motion 4 is to appropriate $185,000 from the Building Stabilization Funds for West Side Fire Station, including construction professional design services. Motion 5 is to appropriate $134,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund for Department of Public Works storage garage units. Motion 6 is to appropriate $60,000 from the Building Stabilization Funds for engineering and evaluation of the Lincoln School chiller replacement and accessory HVAC equipment. Motion 7 is to appropriate $50,000 from the Building Stabilization Funds for the Lincoln School, Lincoln Elementary School site work, including engineering and architectural services. Motion 8 is to appropriate $26,000 from the Building Stabilization Funds for Phase 1 of the McCall School pneumatic control system conversion, including engineering and construction. Motion 9 is to appropriate $725,000 from the Capital Stabilization Funds for the replacement of the Fire Department Engine 3. Motion 10 is to appropriate $66,000 from the Capital Stabilization Funds for Washington Street Bridge Engineering Services. A motion 11 is to appropriate $55,000 from the Capitalization Funds for Cross Street Bridge Engineering Services. Motion 12 is to appropriate $165,000 from the Capital Stabilization Plan Plan for a townwide traffic master plan study. Motion 13 is to appropriate $350,000 from the Capital Stabilization Funds for the replacement of a of the Fire Department ambulance. And Motion 14 is to appropriate $40,000 from the Capital Stabilization Funds for the replacement of a Department of Public Works manager vehicle. Happy to take questions on any of those motions.
Sally and then Roger.
Hi. So about, let's see, I think it's number 12, if you can go up one screen.
Sure.
Motion number right, the townwide traffic plan study. So tell me more or tell us more about the scope of that and whether it will include more than automobile traffic.
Sure, yep. So I actually put this forth as a recommendation as town engineer. So this study is really, it says traffic, but it's more than just cars. Like you said, it's, but, you know, bikes, pedestrians, all sources, modes of transportation to basically get a handle on the various problems that we have around towns and to compile projects, existing projects that we have that have been identified but have not been yet been completed to establish, basically do kind of a townwide brain dump of areas where we have problems, known problems that we don't have recommended action for at this time, so to to identify those. And to put all this information in one plan that that can be used in the coming years to help us prioritize and fund those through the regular capital planning cycle.
That's that's really great, because I know that that's part of the, one of the parts of the townwide master plan. So this is taking that notion of connectivity and identifying problem areas and coming up with sort of a global view of the opportunities.
Right. And and so there won't always be solutions proposed in this plan. It's it's only 165,000, but it would be identified areas for future study.
That's really great. Okay, so maybe the name can be changed. It's like, whatever, I'm not even
Yeah.
Never mind. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellie. I think Patty, you said there was one more question?
Yes, Roger, I'll move him in.
Thanks.
Hi, so I have questions on eight, 11, and 12. So on eight, were were the new portions of the building controlled by pneumatic controls, or are those just in the old portions of the building?
So maybe Jimmy Johnson would be able to answer this question, the Capital Planning Committee?
Hello, I'll try.
Jimmy, thank you.
Yes, Roger, this is an ongoing problem with almost all the controls. If you remember last year, we allocated a small amount of money to see if the system worked. The controls don't interact with each other. The hope and desire is to get the system all in one, so all the pneumatic controls work together and distribute the heat the heat as needed. Does that answer your question, Roger?
Well, my question is, because I I I remember this issue with the high school, and we spent a lot of money just updating the system tempor for temporarily. But it's not a current technology, right? So my question is, is it, do we have pneumatic controls throughout the building or just in the older portions of the building?
My understanding is throughout. It interacts with the system they have now throughout the entire building.
Okay. So but but am I correct in thinking pneumatic controls are not a a thing anymore? I mean,
I'm not capable of answering that.
Okay, okay.
Something we could probably pass on to Pete Lawson from our DPW.
Yeah.
I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that, you know, we did just build a new addition, and I would be very surprised that the pneumatic controls are in that new addition. However, there is supposed to be a, you know, a a high-tech kind of energy management and heat distribution system in place, and we're part of the problem is trying to get all of that to work together. So I think this is mainly just
I see that our superintendent, Dr. Frank Hackett, has his hand raised. Perhaps he can help us answer the question. Thank you, Frank.
Sure. Good evening, hey, good evening. So the the new portion of the building is is not pneumatic. The issue is that we are in two separate controls. In fact, the new portion of the building that has been replaced through the pilot project with the new univents, those are actually also not pneumatic. So whatever's going in new is actually not pneumatic. It will tie the system together. So it's kind of piecemeal. The good thing about it is that Pete Lawson's figured out a way to do this kind of on a piecemeal basis, so it doesn't have to be done all at the same time.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. You had a question on other articles?
Yeah, on 11, what what's the appropriation with respect to the Cross Street Bridge?
Sure. So there are actually two of them, ones for Washington Street Bridge, ones for Cross Street Bridge. So every three years, the state does bridge inspections of bridges in every community in Massachusetts. And in the most recent bridge inspection reports for Washington Street and Cross Street, some deficiencies were identified. So this request for both of those bridges is for engineering and permitting services related to the repairs that are necessary. And then we'll be back in the spring with a request for construction for those improvements.
So but that bridge was 1995 it was built originally. And then we had the culvert.
Yeah, so the culvert, the culvert didn't do anything to the bridge structure itself. It's really kind of separate from the bridge. There are some deficiencies with the bridge abutments at Cross Street Bridge, not the culvert itself. The culvert is not the issue, but the bridge structure itself and some other some other issues that were identified in the state report.
So so is there a is there a prospective of future approch appropriation to actually fix the problems?
Yeah, like I said, we'll be back in the spring for requests for construction funding.
Yeah, and and then the the last question on the on the description in in 12, it says the plan will be used for prioritizing future studies, design and construction projects. And I I would like to really see that plan have at at least some firm ideas of what the solutions are going to be for a given class of problems. And an example would be where the tri-community crosses the the various relatively high-traffic streets. Presumably, we're going to have a single solution for each of those intersections, at least on, you know, at a at a conceptual level, so that we're not getting surprised at what the solution has got to be in a given case that we can we can appropriate with an idea of what we're buying.
So I think 165,000, although it seems like a lot of money, is not enough to to kind of study all the problems that I'm sure we'll identify as part of that plan. Some of these, we may be able to provide some kind of conceptual level ideas as to what the potential solutions might be. Others, you know, like the redesign of the Lockland at Ridge Street intersection there, you know, would require a much more in-depth study. So I know Roger, as part of T-TAC, he will be involved in reviewing the scope of this study before it before we finalize it. So happy to take your feedback there. But I think we have to, you know, just kind of manage expectations and what we can get for the 165,000 that we have to start. And it's a good start, and hopefully we can build on it from there. Did you have questions on any of the other motions here?
No, that's it.
Okay. Patty, was there anybody else in the queue?
Not in the queue. There is a question in the Q and A.
Yeah, thanks. I saw that. So before I go on to Article, okay, there's one question about the Q and A here. So I'm sorry about the Article 12. So the question is, will the traffic study be done before or after road construction at Bridges and Eversource? So there's nothing that will change the work that's Eversource is doing. That work is ongoing right now, both the 115 and 345 KV projects. The two bridge projects are are just structural repairs, so there won't be any changes even to the road surface that will be observable. It's really structural, substructure issues with those bridges. So there's nothing in the in the traffic transportation study master plan that we're talking about that would have any impact there. And then, because I know the question's on Article 12, I did want to go back. Ann Sarah had a question regarding the Swanton Street property. So when were the public meetings for the Swanton/Washington Street property? Where is the standing Select Board Subcommittee for it? So I believe maybe she's referring to some of the prior meetings with respect to the RFP. I think those were done with, within the past year or so. I'm not sure if there's a standing Select Board Subcommittee, but there were meetings, there was a working group established that worked on the RFP, I believe. Susan or Mike, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think that's accurate. We established a, a working group, as I mentioned before, with members of the Planning Board, Select Board, Town Meeting Members, residents in that area. We hired JM Goldson to facilitate the process, and there were several meetings to put together the RFP and kind of have a conversation about if we did move forward either with a negotiated purchase with the owners or an eminent domain taking what we wanted the parcel to look like. So it was consistent with the Planning Board's objectives and how the master plan was laid out and also with the possibilities with that parcel.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, moving on to Article 13, this requires a two-thirds vote, and the proponent is the Capital Planning Committee. This request is to appropriate $72,000 to pay the cost of a feasibility study included, including related engineering, planning, and evaluation work for the repair, reconstruction, or improvement of the South Reservoir Dam. And this is a borrowing authorization. So this is the first step in a larger project to make repairs to the South Reservoir Dam, which has been rated in poor condition, and we are now under a consent order from the Office of Dam Safety to bring it back into compliance. As I said, this is the first step, and we'll be back over the next few town meetings to request engineering and construction money. Happy to take any questions?
There are none.
Thanks, Patty. Article 14, this is a two-thirds vote, and the proponent is a cosponsored article between the Select Board and the Capital Planning Committee. This is a request to appropriate $6.5 million to pay the costs of the transfer station project consisting of remodeling, reconstructing, and making extraordinary repairs to the town's transfer station facility, remediating and preventing pollution caused by the closed incinerator located at the site of the town's transfer station, including the demolition and disposition of the, of the incinerator, and acquiring equipment for the operation of the town's transfer station. This is a borrowing authorization up to $5.5 million. The remainder million will be, will be funded through free cash. Mike, I don't know if you want to add anything to this before we open up to Q and A?
No, I'm just happy to answer questions if there are some.
Great.
And also, I think Jimmy has my sign for information, so he is also Michael Betancourt, it's not like a future version of myself that's also appearing, so he can answer questions as well.
I wondered about that.
I know the difference, so.
Anyway, if you have any questions, please raise your hands, and Patty will elevate you.
So Roger's in the queue, he raised his hand, and then Sally, and then Pam.
Okay.
Roger, you go.
Go ahead, Roger.
So my question is, is there, I haven't seen anything about the plans, the actual plans. Are those available somewhere?
I'm not sure, is there currently information up on the town's website? If not, perhaps we can add something.
I don't, I'm not sure if they, there are. Roger, I can actually probably send you something that I have also.
Okay, yeah, because I, I mean, obviously people are going to say, what are we buying? What does it look like?
Yeah, that makes sense.
At particularly people in my neighborhood who look at it every day.
So we can certainly post some information under the Town Meeting section of the website. I'll work with Mary Ellen to get that done in the next few days.
I would, I would, I would just, Roger, I would just throw in that the Select Board had a cup, at least two presentations by the DPW and their engineering consultant on this, it was Weston and Sampson, and there are some, you know, designs from above, you know, it's not like schematics of buildings, but it's, it's, you know, an overhead engineer's drawing that, or drawings that exist, yeah.
Right, but I, I don't watch every Select Board meeting.
Come on, Roger. They're recorded, you can watch them later, you don't have to watch them live.
Oh, God.
I just didn't want it to seem like there had been nothing, but yes, I understand you have not watched every single one, thank you.
Okay, Patty, I think you said there was someone else in the queue?
Hi, this is Sally.
Hi, Sally.
Hi, so I did actually have a chance to look at the Weston and Sampson plan views of the transfer station restoration, renovation, transformation, whatever you call it, and I'm generally really psyched about this article. And I want to know if there will be, before they start getting bids on the work, a chance for the town to weigh in with opinions on the plans. And I don't think the plans, in my view, need major revisions, but for many people in town who know me, they know that I'm kind of a swap shop maven, and the swap shop hasn't been, been given necessarily a lot of attention, but that's just one example. I just want the town people to have an opportunity to really, maybe a public hearing is what I'm talking about, to really weigh in on the Weston and Sampson plans and make sure that they're finalized with the blessings of the residents too, that's, that's all. And that they should be posted, yes.
So it's my understanding that the plans have gone to DEP for approval. I'm not sure what level of ability we have at this point to make any substantial changes to those plans. Mike or Jimmy, I don't know if you have any additional information on that schedule?
I'm, I'm not sure either, I mean, I will say that a lot of the work here is, is operational in nature, so it's really repairing things, the conveyor belt, adding in a license plate reader, so we can really make sure that we're not losing money by people coming in on the commercial side or not having stickers coming in. And one of the big pieces is environmental, is removing that large incinerator building there that has electrical issues, has just, just been closed down for years, but has real environmental concerns. So there are some improvements to the tipping building and happy to provide you with more information. But I think we've, we've had this before town meeting a couple times, and, you know, I think it's, these are, even though the cost is very high, these are the operational needs that are well overdue for the transfer station, and some of it's, the pavement needs to be redone. There's a, a cap underneath that pavement that if it gets damaged, then it's going to be very expensive to, for us to replace because it used to be a landfill there. So it's kind of making sure that we can keep things going in the same way for, for a number of years. So it's operational in nature. I know the swap shop has had some upgrades recently, but it's, it's not a, a focus of this plan.
Right, no, I, I definitely heartily endorse the environmental and sort of operational improvements that the plan is suggesting. So I will consider the needs of the not terribly important swap shop, to be not terribly important, but I understand, and I'm, I'm very much in favor of this article.
Thanks, Sally. Patty, was there anybody else in the queue for Article 14?
Yes, I'm bringing Pam in, and then Ruth.
Hi, thank you. I, I am also, I, I did attend the Select Board meetings where they talked about the plan for this, and I am very much in support of it. My concerns are just with funding. I, I also watched the board meeting where they were, where you guys were all talking about whether or not to raise fees, and you decided to wait because you may be getting rid of the SMART bag program. And those folks would be seeing an, an increased transfer station fee plus an additional surcharge, and you were concerned about that for anybody who was sort of moving over, that that might be an onerous kind of increase. But I'm concerned because it, it is a lot of money. I, I wish that there had been some sort of a surcharge on these fees that had occurred some years ago so that a fund for the maintenance and replacing of these aging systems could have existed. And I, I guess what I'd like to see is maybe a commitment to create a fund that is paid for out of a small surcharge on the transfer station fee for the continued maintenance of these, so that we don't have systems that are old and broken down that can be maintained. So that's, that's my comment there.
Thank you. So just to follow up on that, the board did vote at a meeting earlier this year to keep the fees at $270, starting January 1st. There will be, in 2023, a capital fee added to that of $22 in the first year. So there'll be no change, although we are getting rid of the SMART program for 2022, there'll be no change to the fee for 2022. The capital fee will be added in '23, and then the board will have to consider any additional fee, regular fee adjustments in, in '23 as well, as we get towards the end of next year.
Yeah, I guess I, I just, this is something I think we should have done years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think, Patty said Ruth is next?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Ruth.
Yes, this is a question for our town manager, good evening, Beth. The question has to do with using the transfer station as a regional hub for solid waste management and shipping it via the trails, the rails, rather. So there's conversation both locally and at the state level about this. The state-level master plan for solid waste management is proposing that we do this in the state of Massachusetts, that any municipality that already has a transfer station next to the rails consider being used regionally or at least locally. And municipalities that have rails but no transfer stations to build them, transfer stations next to the rails. The goal is after the 90% reduction of total solid waste by 2050 to take any remaining that we cannot process in state and to ship it down to states where, like Mississippi, Georgia, Ohio, Pennsylvania, where the environmental standards are lower, scrubbers are not as much, the standards for those are lower in those states, and the cost of labor is lower. So it's cheaper to ship the trash out of state and burn it. Obviously, that raises both climate concerns to ship solid waste thousands of miles, and it also raises environmental justice concerns, whether it's shipped out of state or whether it's shipped to Pittsfield on the western part of this Massachusetts. And on the local level, I do recall Mr. Mucci asking at a recent Select Board meeting whether the current, um, proposal would still allow for that use of the rails, whether trash in Winchester could be put on rails and removed, I'm not sure to where. And my understanding is that if we were to do this, it would be a revenue source for the town. So that is, um, an enticement. But my question to you is, is this actually being something that's discussed? And is it likely, is it something we can do, we want to do? Thank you.
Sure, so I believe there is additional capacity under the town's permit to process more solid waste in our facility. The, the concept of use of the rail has been just thrown around. In the three weeks that I've been town manager, I've heard that just a very few times. I, I would think that that is a very significant discussion that would need to happen within the Select Board in terms of if that's something that we would want to do to operate our transportation in that manner and would obviously impact the residents in that area. So I think that would be a, a very long public dialogue before any decision to that extent was made. Mike or Susan, if you're happy, if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think that we decided against that, specifically on the policy side, we could always do it. We have to enter in two-to-three-year agreements for solid waste removal with the different companies that come in and take our trash. So in one of the major considerations there was really the impact on the neighborhood. So there are two options, I mean, we could increase our commercial allotment. I think we use about half of what we're, what we can handle for our permit. But, you know, that means a lot more trucks coming down Swanton Street, a lot more trucks coming down Washington Street, and it's kind of at a time, frankly, where I think that that neighborhood is sick of traffic, sick of construction, and probably something that we can hold off on for a while. And the rail piece of it, I think, is something that maybe we would consider well down the road, but it, it really flew in the face of our, a lot of our other policy objectives, and especially, as you mentioned, Ruth, the climate impact issues as well as the environmental justice issues. I think the Select Board was, felt strongly that we, we had to handle our trash another way, and it's why we are focused on the extended producer responsibility legislation as well. And so is our, our delegation to kind of shift some of the, the creation of the trash and the cost of that back to the producers of it. So hopefully, Amazon and a bunch of those companies can, you know, contribute to the cost of the trash that we're seeing locally that can't be recycled as recycling costs are increasing.
Great, thanks, Mike. So I think next in our queue is Susan Lewis, and then we'll go to Roger for a follow-up.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I, I was curious about the decision to end the SMART program because in my understanding is that the SMART program's been very successful in reducing solid waste and why we wouldn't be moving toward expanding it at this point rather than ending it. So if you can offer some clarification on that.
Mike or Susan, if you want to take that?
I can weigh in a little bit. Susan, thanks for the question, it's nice to hear your voice. So I think, in, in many ways, I think it, it, it has been successful. It hasn't been successful in reducing solid waste. Our numbers are almost identical to what it was 10 years ago. So the kind of policy initiative there was to remove recycling from the solid waste stream, and that would reduce costs because removing recycling was cheaper for us than solid waste was. Now that recycling costs have come up and actually are, are even more than our solid waste costs and we're required to recycle by the, the state, the, it's, it's not cost-effective for us. So it's, we were really subsidizing the SMART program through the permit fee, and it, things kind of really kind of turned over on itself in a way, and now it's, it, it hasn't really been as effective as intended, and a lot of, a lot of that is cost-driven and it's, it's market-driven. So there, the secondary market's not looking to purchase our, our recycling. So one of the things that we, we may do in the future is go back to separating, and we were talking about this in a meeting this morning, that there, there is value in the secondary market's purchasing cardboard. So that may be something that we pull out of the, the waste stream. So there's, there's a lot of financial factors in play here that keep the SMART program from, from being effective. On, on the other hand, as the Select Board has discussed, we do realize that it was a, you know, ideological goal for some residents to participate in SMART, but also a financial one. So we're going to analyze our low-income fees for the transfer station and, and create some different tiers there for people that were, were using it because they had less trash and could afford less. So that's another piece of it that we're going to look to.
Thanks, Mike. I think Roger Wilson's next for follow-up.
So I want to underscore the concern about truck traffic. The last thing we need is more truck traffic on, on Swanton Street. But also, I've been involved for years in the, in the problem at the warehouse on, on the border with Woburn and the idling trains. So any train service Woburn and the idling trains. So any train service would be at night. And and it would be right at the foot of Irving Street. And the, you know, so you're not just looking at a problem with truck traffic all day, but train traffic all night. And I I'm going to ask a question about this in town meetings. So it would be good to have a really strong answer about how we're not going to do this.
Thanks, Roger. Any other questions on Article 14? Okay, so I want to go back to, there's a question in the Q and A from Anne Sarah on Article 13. She seems to be having a delay. So just quickly, is there any estimated costs including engineering, construction and other costs for the reconstruction of the dam? This is Article 13. So the money we're requesting this 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 fall is for a feasibility study, which will basically help us identify the future engineering and construction costs. So I don't have a good number for you at this point, but that will be the primary focus of this feasibility study to identify the scope of the problem and to help us scope out future engineering and construction costs. Okay, so if there's nothing else on Article 14, we're going to move on to Article 15. Article 15 requires a majority vote. It's on the consent agenda and the proponent is the select board. This vote, sorry, this motion, this article appropriates $4,141.10 from the Transportation Network Receipts Reserve Fund to partially fund the Waterfield Road Church Street Traffic Improvement Project. So this is a standard article we have now every year on town meeting where we get this money through ride sharing programs and other sources. And the town appropriates that typically for a related transportation project. Any questions?
None.
Okay, great. Thanks, everybody.
Roger just
Sorry.
Roger just raised his hand.
Okay, go ahead, Roger.
What is the project we're talking about there?
So it's the reconstruction of the Church Street at Waterfield Road project that has been approved for for engineering and construction funding by town meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, great.
Sally also has a question.
Super quick, I just hope that you will just take one minute in town meeting to explain about the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund. You don't need to do it now. But it sounds like it's a thing that we get money from, and it would be good to know how it works. And that's great. So if you just include that in your talk, let's
So this this item is actually on the consent agenda, but there's some information in the background in the motion book that provides more detail. And I'm happy to take any additional questions you might have, Sally.
Yeah, I can give you a call or email you or look it up online. It's fine. No, no trouble.
Great, thanks. Okay, if there's nothing else here, we'll go on to Article 16. Article 16 is a majority vote and its proponent is the town manager. This is a consent agenda item as well. This is a standard article that we have at town meeting. In this case, the town's voting to appropriate $298,240.94 from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund. 24, $224,070.94, of which shall be used for PEG's access service programming, monitoring and cable operator compliance with the franchise agreement and $74,170, which will be used for capital purposes. So Wincam used to receive funds directly from Comcast and Verizon as part of the license agreement between the cable companies and the town. Town meeting voted to create a PEG Access and Cable Related Fund in the 2019 Springtown Meeting to accept payments as the state determined that the licenses with the town and the funds must go to the town first. So this is that a mechanism to allow those money to be transferred through that fund. I'm happy to answer any questions. All right, hearing none.
Rogers.
Oh, go ahead, Roger.
Ask a question.
So the question is, is there any oversight built in to how this money is spent?
So the money is spent by Wincam, not by the town of Winchester.
So it's the board of Wincam that decides how the money's spent?
Even though I am the proponent of this of this article, I would say I'm not the authority. So I don't know anybody else.
I'm shocked that you don't know this.
I don't know if there's anybody else with more experience on how this process works that is able to answer that question for Roger. If not, we can take it.
I
Excuse me, yes, Wincam is responsible. The board oversees the expenditures and the capital projects at for Wincam. So they have their own board doing that.
Thank you, Patty.
So that might be worth mentioning, just so people understand.
This is a, this is a, again, it's a consent agenda item. This is a standard article that kind of goes through every year since this fund was created. But there is additional information in the background, although that specific question is not answered there, Roger.
No, I didn't see it. That's why I asked. Okay.
Thanks. Any further questions? All right, we head to Article 17. Article 17 requires a majority of vote. The proponent is the Finance Committee, and this item is on the consent agenda. This again is a standard item for the town to reallocate money for FY22 costs. So there's a variety of items here, moving money into the general insurance budget. Replacing, replenishing the reserve fund account, that's Motion 2. Motion 3 is allocating money, $293,000 for the FY22 principal unfunded debt. And then Motion 4, the town vote to increase FY22 interest on funded debt account number provided here for $1,400, excuse me, $100,041.158. So any questions on this one? And Megan, I think some, Megan Blackwell from the Finance Committee is here, if there's any comments or questions. Okay. Hearing none, we'll go on to Article 18. This requires a majority of vote. Proponent again is the Finance Committee, and this is on the consent agenda. So this article is the Water and Store Enterprise Fund expenses voted at the 2021 Springtown Meeting be increased by $40,339. Of which, with excuse me, from $37,500 from the chapter 110 and increasing the water and store receipts by $3,334. Any questions on this one? Okay, hearing none. We'll go on to Article 19. Article 19 is, requires a majority of vote. Proponent is the Select Board. The town vote to appropriate $315,000 from free cash for the purposes of contributing the town share of improvements to the Winchester Center Community Rail Station. So just a little bit of background on this one, the town has been working with the TE for over 10 years on improvements to that station, which was closed down last year due to safety concerns. There was a previous allocation last year at town meeting to fund improve, to fund additional work that the town had requested. That project has since been bid and those items that the town requested came in higher than the original engineer's estimate, as did the overall project for the TE. So the additional $315,000 is our cost to pay for those specific items that the town requested, previously requested. So happy to take any questions on this one? Okay, hearing none.
I have one question, Beth.
Sure.
Roger, the, I thought that the stone business was removed from the final plans for the TE. Is it, it's still in there or not?
So the town specifically prioritized the reuse of the salvage stone on the facade along Lareway Road. We did remove it from other areas of the project, which will now be casted place concrete. So like at the Waterfield Road and on Waterfield Lot and the Agrozone Lot. We did request, and the TE did, including their bid, the reuse of salvage stone along Lareway Road. That was determined by the Select Board and the working group that participated on the project to kind of be the most visually important area as it flows with the historic town center and the town common area. So this additional money is in part to fund that.
Okay, so it's still in. Okay, thank you.
Not, not all of it, the part of it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pam also has a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I have I appreciate wanting to keep the character of the town looking beautiful. I have a, I'm just concerned, this is over a half a million dollars and from a fiscal standpoint, we're looking at a debt exclusion override on Lynch and possibly another another operational override probably sooner than people want. And while our tax rate is not excessive because of our high property values, the tax bills do get high. I'm concerned about people being, you know, I'm concerned about the need for another override and and people looking at needing to do that or possibly losing emergency services like police and fire or cutting out things, more things from the school budget while we're looking at putting facade on the train station in the middle of town. And so I, I don't know. I don't know if this is more of a question or a comment, or if there are if this was something that was determined through public feedback in public hearings or or how we, how we decided that this was something that necessarily needed to be done. Thank you.
So there, there has been a lot of public feedback over the 10 year history of this project. And as Roger kind of mentioned, we had a much larger scope of things that we wanted to do and whittled it down to kind of four key items that the town specifically requested that the MBTA include in their project that we would help to pay, pay for. Obviously, it, you know, as with many things in today's environment, the numbers, the TE's overall project came in much higher than their original engineer's estimate, and our piece in particular did as well. And I certainly understand your concern about the, you know, financial health of the town going forward. I will say that we had a very healthy close to FY21, so we have a certified, and you'll hear about more about this in the Article 1 report that I'm going to provide to town meeting. We had free cash certified at $13.4 million, which is well over our operating reserves policy that the Select Board has. So we have a operating reserve policy that puts us between 6 and 10%, and that the current free cash value puts us at 14.4%. We have about $1.7 million of free cash requests that are being put forth at town meeting this year, and that drops us, I think, to 12.8% in our free cash, excuse me, in our operating reserve amount. So while I certainly understand the long term concerns that you have, we're actually in a pretty healthy position right now in terms of our free cash allocations. Mike or Susan, if you want to add anything to that.
I just wanted to add, being part of the longstanding working group on the train station, that this was one of the major goals of the working group. And so it was something that, you know, we we really worked towards and wanted to invest in. So we're there's never really a good time financially for you know, for our budget to work something in like this. It was, you know, kind of a major piece that the, a very large working group really focused on. I know Beth was, you know, part of those for a long period of time. So there were other concessions that we had to make, but this seemed to be the one that the vast majority of the group really supported.
I appreciate that feedback, and I appreciate all the work that the working group put in. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty, any other questions on this one?
None.
Okay, great. We'll move on to Article 20. So Article 20 requires a majority of vote. Proponent is the Select Board, and this is a consent agenda item as well. So this is the town to vote to appropriate $70,000 from free cash to supplement the Eversource account for the purposes of engineering and other consulting services regarding the location and construction of the Eversource 345 KV line. So the town negotiated a memorandum of understanding with Eversource after the Springtown Meeting for the 345 line, which is the line that runs between Woburn along Washington Street, down Cross Street, and then back into Woburn, towards the Woburn substation. The town is entered into an agreement with an engineering firm to help us provide field engineering services. And so this amount, $70,000, is required for us to sign the contract with them for that work. This is fully reimbursable, so that that money will be reimbursed to the town from Eversource as we are invoiced for the work and, and get the reimbursements from them. So in the end, it's a net zero balance to the town for the work. Any questions?
None.
Great, thanks, Patty. Article 21, this is a majority of vote. Proponent is the Select Board, and this is a consent agenda item. Again, this is another one related to the Eversource 345 KV project. So the town, as part of that MOU, negotiated up to $200,000 in mitigation payments. That mitigation payments are predicated on a milestone achievement by Eversource in completing various work. So as they complete certain items, the town will be reimbursed for these mitigation payments. So we, they've completed the first piece of the work, and we did receive the initial $10,000 from them associated with that milestone achievement. And so this will be a standard item probably for the next few town meetings as Eversource continues to work on that 345 KV construction project. Happy to take any questions?
None.
Okay, great. Article 22, this is a four fifths vote. The proponent is the town manager. This is a consent agenda item. So this is this is to help follow, to pay for prior year expenses incurred in fiscal year 21. So the total cost is $2,370.79. And there's three invoices that require payment totaling that amount. Happy to take any questions? This is again a standard article.
Pamela has a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I actually have a couple of questions. One is if, if this goes on to the consent agenda and a four fifths vote is required, does that mean that the entire consent agenda needs a four fifths vote?
Mary Ellen, is that something you're able to answer? I think, I think there can be a request to pull items off the consent agenda by the town meeting, but not sure if Mary Ellen's still here.
Okay, that, that's a procedural question. And then the other is if you can just tell us what the Morgan Brown and Joy and the Everbridge bills are for.
So Morgan Brown and Joy are the town's Labor Council. Everbridge, I'm not sure, Mark Too Good might be here, the Assistant Town Manager, might be able to answer that question.
I would just hazard on the procedural question that the reason this is four fifths is because these bills are being paid from the prior fiscal year. We're paying them now, and that's why they have to be this higher voting threshold. I think it's just for this article.
That's the Everbridge, I believe, was a piece of equipment or a service for the fire department.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
I would just want to make sure that if this requires a four fifths and say the consent, I mean, chances are the consent agenda is going to pass with well above a four fifths margin. But I would just hate to see the entire consent agenda not pass because not more than four fifths voted in favor of it. And then this article, kind of, so just, yeah.
Yeah, we want to avoid that, yes. We'll find out. Thank you.
Any other questions, Patty?
No, there is.
Okay, I think Okay, I think there was one from Ann Sarah. I saw a question going back to Article 21. For Article 21, is the 10K for the traffic calming for Eversource going to be refunded? So the $10,000 is money that's coming into the town. That's not a, it's a mitigation payment. It's not a refund to the town. So we will be accruing that money. And then the town will make some decisions about what we do in terms of traffic mitigation, traffic calming work in the Washington and in Cross Street corridors with that funding.
Mary Ellen also responded to Pam's question because she is having problems with audio. And she said that you can pull it off if it's, if there is a concern, pull it out.
Thank you. So it wouldn't affect the vote for the rest of the consent agenda. Okay, heading on to Article 23. Article 23 has been indefinitely postponed, so we'll have no further discussion on that one this evening. Article 24, this is a consent agenda item. Proponent is the Select Board. There's two motions under this article. Both these motions relate to mitigation payments that were required to the town as part of the DBA decision for the 40B project on River Street. So there's $275,000 for traffic improvements and other, other mitigations, mitigation measures on River Street and Cross Street that were specifically called out in a memorandum by the town's peer review consultant Tool Design Group. And the second one is for $20,965 related to sewer system improvements on River Street. That was again specifically required as part of the project. Happy to answer any questions on this one?
There's one, Roger.
Okay. Go ahead, Roger.
So what is the plan on, for, on Cross Street?
Yeah, so that, for the traffic calming work?
Yeah.
So that was for improvements at the intersection of Holton Street and Cross Street. And there was a plan that was developed by Tool. The developer was required to only pay what they call their fair share. So that's not, does not fully fund the project. It does fund part of the project, but not the full amount that was estimated by Tool at the time.
So the, so the 275 is, is our, our contribution to it?
The 275 is, so through this article, we're accepting, the money is already been paid. They were required in the ZBA decision to pay the town prior to obtaining a building permit. So to pay these two mitigation payments, or in one case, it's just the pay, paying the cost of, you know, doing the sewer improvements.
But we have...
So this is money the town has in, in hands. And, and so we are basically accepting the money through this account, through this article.
But, but we haven't made the matching appropriation or whatever.
No.
Okay.
That would be a feature.
And there isn't actually a final plan for Holton Street?
There was a draft conceptual plan that was developed as part of the ZBA process. But yeah, correct, there's no final engineering plans that have been developed. And this $275,000 could be put towards that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? All right, headed on to Article 25. So this, Article 25 requires a majority vote. This is, the proponent is the Select Board. This article relates to a new reconstruction of the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School. And so this, there's a basically a much larger project going on. The town does send, is part of this district. And so they're looking to basically reconstruct the existing vocational school. The town's estimated share of the district's debt for this purpose, exclusive of interest and based upon current enrollment, is approximately $2,725,725, excuse me, $721, which amount will be reduced to the extent of MSBA grants received by the district, resulting in an estimated net principal share allocated to the town, exclusive of interest of approximately $1,516 to, $1,516,222. So that's our share of a much larger regional project valued at over $317 million. Susan, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No, that's the gist of it. And I would just add that this is the Massachusetts School Building Authority standard legal formulation for this motion. It's kind of daunting and scary. VOTEC high schools are pretty complex and, you know, have to have very specialized things in them, like auto repair and carpentry and so forth. So this, this is on the agenda because the VOTEC Building Committee has been working on this for a long time and has lobbied the MSBA and the legislature for a very high reimbursement rate that is tied to the fiscal year 2021 budget, the state budget. And they are looking for all of the member districts to approve this so that they can keep that higher reimbursement rate. And then the lower number, in some ways fortunately, the much lower number, is Winchester's share. There are some, 12 districts in this, 12, you know, towns and cities in the, in the regional group that goes to this school.
And the town will be assessed on an annual basis with the cross associated with this. Any questions on this one?
Yes, Roger.
Go ahead, Roger.
So I've, I've actually already gotten questions on this. And, and I want to see if I answered it right. So we're, we're actually only borrowing $1,500 or something, $516, is that correct?
At this point, the town is not borrowing anything.
Yeah.
The, at this point, the, the plan is that it would be funded through the operating budget.
So this is an annual appropriation or?
So this is the total amount, and then it would be assessed annually.
The interest or whatever would be assessed annually?
I apologize. This is a borrowing authorization.
It is a borrowing authorization, yeah.
Yeah, I apologize.
And, and our share of the principal is the $2,700,000. And then that's before the MSBA reimbursement. So after the MSBA reimbursement, it's the lower number. And it would be a borrowing, and we would be assessed every year. If we wanted this to be a debt exclusion, we could have a town vote to make it a debt exclusion.
But...
If we wanted to.
But the dollar amount per year for borrowing, spread over however many years, is going to be very small, right?
Yes, compared to things for our, our school building projects, yeah.
Yeah, so it would be handy to have that small number available to, to explain this. And that's the way I explained it. But then the other thing is also, as I understand it, some of the towns aren't going to go along with it. And it, the whole thing is going to have to be put to a popular vote.
If...
So affirmative votes are required by eight communities.
Eight communities, yeah.
Yeah.
I think two have not approved it, and I think two have approved it. I think Stonem and Reading or North Reading or someone did approve it. If this whole committee, the regional school committee sees that this is not going to be approved, the regional school committee does have the power to call an election in each of the towns.
Okay, thank you.
I believe Sally Dale has a question.
Yes, not so much a question, is that I wanted to say that there was a recent article in either the New York Times or the Boston Globe about the value of vocational, regional vocational schools to our region. And if it was the Times, it might have even been an analysis of their value nationally. But it was a very compelling article that I will be happy to send to you, Beth, because I think that it, it makes a strong case for, what would you say, the big bang for the buck of investing in this program and having a very long-term, very positive benefit to the whole region. Not, not just the small number of students from Winchester, and perhaps there could be more, that take advantage of this avenue of education. So I'm just, I will find that for you, Beth.
Thanks, Sally. Appreciate it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Any other questions on Article 25? Okay, we'll move on to 26. Article 26 is a majority vote. Proponent is the Select Board. And town, the article is town vote to appropriate $25,000 from free cash for engineering services to construct a multipurpose sports court at the Mystic School. So this is a request that was made by our Recreation Department to install what they are calling a multi-sport, multi-purpose sports court where the existing basketball court is, that's in very poor condition at the Mystic School. And this is a request just for engineering services with the intent of coming back at Springtown meeting to request construction funding. Happy to take any questions?
Pam.
Okay, go ahead, Pam.
Tonight, hold on. Oh, wait a minute.
Sorry. Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, yep, yep, thanks.
Thank you. I have a question. The $25,000 for engineering services, is there a, an estimate on what the cost to construct it would be? And has anybody looked at what the, or have any idea, taken a wag at what the anticipated revenue would be once it's constructed?
So I believe there was a similar facility constructed in a nearby town, and the cost of that construction was around $170,000 or $175,000. Hard to say until we get through engineering services exactly what the facility would cost in Winchester, but that's just kind of to give you a ballpark estimate. The Recreation Department did feel like this would be a significant revenue generator for them, which is why it was recommended and why the Select Board voted to put this on the warrant. I don't have any of the specific numbers, but that's certainly something we could provide if that was of interest.
I, I think it's going to be something that, that other town meeting members have questions about. And I, I, I think it, it's helpful to argue in favor of it, to be able to come in and say, we, we anticipate this kind of revenue coming in. And I think that the new, the new director of our rec program is, you know, it's commendable that he's looking at ways to improve the facilities and to increase engagement. But I just want to make sure again, like, that we just understand the costs associated with this.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions on this one? All right, I think we'll move on to Article 27. This is a majority vote. Town manager is the proponent. So in this case, we're requesting the appropriation of $52,000 from free cash for maintenance of existing flood mitigation projects, specifically related to the vegetation maintenance and dredging of, excuse me, vegetation maintenance along what was called Project 2, which is along the Mystic Valley Parkway, where we did the channel widening project several years ago. And the second piece is for removal of sediment downstream of the Cross Street culvert. So this is for design and permitting, and just the $52,000 would be a secondary request for construction. Happy to take any questions on this one?
Sally has a question. Hold on.
Go ahead, Sally.
Yes, so my question has to do with whether this intersects or benefits or whatever the Aborjona Initiative project that is currently underway with the Conservation Commission.
So you're talking about Davidson Park?
Well, actually, I'm talking about the Aborjona Initiative.
Oh, okay. Yep, so, you know, I think with respect to the work along Mystic Valley Parkway, part of the work will be to remove invasive species. There's been a lot of, kind of larger vegetation that's grown up there. And if anybody was around for the construction of that project, you know that there's a very, what's called a mechanically stabilized slope that's in there. And so those large, larger trees can really disrupt the stability of that slope, and we don't want to damage that. So this is required for that, for the long-term preservation of that. There may be some added benefit, as you mentioned, Sally, where we are removing invasive species, that, something that we are, you know, trying to do along the entire Aborjona Quarter. So there's an added benefit there. But this is really specifically for the maintenance of those flood mitigation projects so that they can perform as originally designed.
Okay, all right. Well, that's helpful. That's good.
Sure, yep.
Roger also has a question.
Go ahead, Roger.
Two questions. One, on the, on below Cross Street, how, how far down is that going to extend? And, and will that dress up the, the, the land between the, the path and the river?
Yeah, so it's really just at the culvert itself. And if you, and if you can wait that long for my presentation, I think I have a picture of the sediment downstream. It's, it's a very localized area just at the culvert itself and a little bit downstream. There will be no other work in the general area associated with it.
And then my other question for the area along the Parkway, that, that plastic material that was put on the bank is all falling apart and doesn't really look like a long-term solution. Has anybody...
Yeah, so that was, that was just installed as a slope stabilization measure until the plants grew up. So that wasn't intended to be kind of there, you know, in place long-term.
Okay, so what happens at the water line? Because that's where it's deteriorating.
Yeah, again, the, the mechanically stabilizers, it almost looks like, kind of like blocks that get put in in the slope and filled with soil. And so that's what we're trying to protect. That kind of filter fabric that you see was just installed.
Yeah.
As an erosion control measure until the plant stabilized.
I paddle up there, so I, I look at it quite closely. And will this remove the, the logs and trees and stuff that have fallen across?
Yes, yep. And if there's, you know, that's maintenance work that DPW does also from time to time.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on 27? All right, we'll move on to 28. Article 28, this is a majority vote. Sponsor is the school committee. This article is the town vote to appropriate $57,000 from free cash for continued architectural and engineering consulting services for the Sanborn Carriage House renovation associated with the school district's central office re-location study. I believe Dr. Hackett is here, if you want to provide any further statement, or we can just open it up for questions.
Sorry about that. I was trying to find my unmute button. Only in that we do have a full page on our website dedicated to this project. And there's both some video of the presentation and school community discussion on there. There's a lot of, a lot of good information that I can either put in the Q and A or send along to you, Beth.
Great, thanks, Frank. Any questions on this one? All right.
No.
Hearing none. We'll move on to Article 29. We're almost there, folks. Article 29, majority vote. The proponent is the Select Board. Vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court to enact special legislation substantially in the form below that permits the town to enact a bylaw charging a building permit surcharge to be used by the town for the purposes of funding sustainability initiatives in the town and to establish a special revenue fund to receive the proceeds of that surcharge or to take any action there too. The language is "an act establishing a building permit surcharge and special revenue fund in the town of Winchester." Mike Bankcourt's here. If there's any specific questions on this article?
Yes, Ruth is, and...
Go ahead, Ruth.
Good evening. My question has to do, well, first of all, I'd like to say this is a very good article as clarified by town council in the Springtown meeting. This is a tax. It's a carbon tax. And that is a very good strategy from a climate perspective, whether you're putting an addition on your home or building a new building. The bigger the house, the bigger the tax you pay, and that's a good thing to do. My question has to do with, what's not on the screen there, but Section 2, Part B, Subsection 3, which says the hiring of a town sustainability coordinator and other... which says the hiring of a town sustainability coordinator and other employees, uh, engaged in, and it goes on about their wages and benefits. So, um, my question is why we would put any town employee, be it someone, you know, a firefighter, the Director of Public Works, a teacher, anyone, um, a regular town employee on a fee structure? So their salary is tied to fees or grants? And I wonder what kind of precedent this sets for other town employees to be put on a fee schedule like this? So if you could address that, please?
Yeah, I'm happy to address that, Beth, if, um, you would like.
Yeah, go ahead. Thanks, Mike.
So I, I, I think that what this does is, um, it charges a fee and creates, um, a fund there that is earmarked for, um, purposes of, um, sustainability. Um, so it could be used for the things listed. It's, it's not required to. So, uh, for example, right now, our, uh, Sustainability Director and Energy Coordinator are, um, n- not paid, you know, this way at all. So, um, they're essentially paid through our, um, uh, operating, um, budget. So, uh, and so it's, I, 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 I think that there's, um, a, a sense here that, um, it's, you know, that we're, we're tying these positions to the surcharge, but we're, uh, you know, just trying to, uh, create more capacity for us to do the necessary work. So right now, um, there is that surcharge in place. So, um, it is being, uh, really, uh, earmarked and, um, segregated kind of on the books. But it's still all that, I think right now we've raised about forty-five grand since we, um, put this into place in, uh, in July. Um, so, uh, but it's not necessarily, um, protected. It could be used for something else. So what this does is it says, um, that money that's raised is going to be protected from any other use, and it's going to give town meeting control, uh, over those funds. So, um, it really kind of takes it out of the hands of the Select Board and says, you know, town meeting, you can set the rate, you can, um, apply the funds if you want to hire an energy coordinator, um, you want to do a, uh, a study, um, you want to put it towards infrastructure, you can do that. So it's more of a list of possibilities than a requirement that certain, um, positions are funded this way. So, um, and, you know, in the case where, you know, if we, um, do have a budget crunch and, um, there are cuts that have to be made, say, in operating override fails, um, I think it would actually, uh, protect some of these existing positions, um, that have, um, been put on our books lately that, um, otherwise might be cut because the, the fee is there to, uh, prop them up. So, um, it's certainly not requiring, um, any employees to be, to have their positions funded this way. Um, the, all our positions are funded through our operating budget.
Can I follow up with that?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, so would it be, uh, would you be amenable then to having a motion to delete Section, uh, Two B, Subsection Three, and take out the, uh, components about wages and salaries so that it would put things on an even footing with other town employees? I heard what you said, and I understand it, but, um, still, it's, um, different than any other town employee. So I just am curious whether you might be amenable to taking that subsection out.
Go ahead, Mike.
I, I mean, I, I guess the board can discuss it. I mean, it's not a unilateral, unilateral, um, decision, you know, um, by any of us. Um, but, um, I, I think it's really, um, misconstruing, misrepresenting, um, the, uh, intent of the article. So it's not, it's not tying anything to, um, the, any of those positions. Um, it's, um, saying that it could be used for those, um, if, if necessary. So I think if anything, it, it protects and insulates those positions, um, from being caught or being impacted at all. So, um, I, I don't, I think it would make it, um, much worse for our sustainability, um, efforts, um, if, uh, if we, we didn't have this broadly construed.
Thanks, Mike. Um, Patty, were there any other questions on this one?
No.
Okay, great. We'll move on to Article thirty. Uh, Article thirty is a majority vote. This is a Personnel Board article, and there are two motions under this, uh, article. The first is that the town's compensation plan be amended effective January first, twenty-twenty-two, as recommended by the Town Manager and the Personnel Board. Um, basically, it's, uh, two edits to the compensation schedule. So first is under Schedule T, excuse me, Schedule Three, uh, to delete PT fourteen Facilities Coordinator and add PT fifteen Facilities Coordinator. And the second is under Schedule Five, to add a Council on Aging Volunteer Coordinator, uh, position stipend. Uh, Article Two, um, is for the town to appropriate, and there's actually an error here that I just, uh, discovered this evening. So, um, there's an error, this dollar amount here, the two thousand, three hundred and three dollars is an error. Should be three thousand, eight hundred and three dollars, uh, so appropriate three thousand, eight hundred and three dollars from free cash, um, for the municipal personal services budgets for Department of Public Works and Council on Aging to, um, come pay for the cost of those changes. And so the total amount of that is, um, three thousand, eight hundred and three dollars. I'm happy to take any questions on this one?
Roger has a question.
Okay, go ahead, Roger.
Uh, when are these materials going to be distributed?
Um, so we just completed the, uh, photocopying, and I think they went out in the mail today. So there's, um, two additional pieces of information that are, that were mailed to town meeting members. One was the Personnel Board report, um, and the second was, uh, um, FAQ document that was requested, um, at Springtown Meeting with respect to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Um, so both those, uh, documents should be going out. Um, if they didn't go out today, they'll go out tomorrow to town meeting members.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on this one? Okay, we'll move on to Article thirty-one, the, the final one. Uh, so Article thirty-one is a majority vote, and, um, although this is a, the official proponent is the Select Board for this article, the motion, um, that we're looking at here is, has been made by Town Meeting Member Carol Savage. Um, I'll just quickly, uh, restate this, and then I believe Ms. Savage is here, um, if, happy to take, uh, any comments or statements from you, um, before we move on to questions. Um, so this motion is that, uh, Communications Study Committee be authorized to meet regularly and as required until the conclusion of Fall twenty, Fall Town Meeting of twenty-twenty-two to advise and report to Town Meeting regarding opportunities to establish robust and effective communication between residents and town government and within town government to increase community participation and town decisions with elevated awareness of town issues and initiatives. Carol, do you want to provide a statement before we go into the question and answer? Period?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Oh, good. Um, I apologize in advance. I'm calling in from my phone. I hope the connection, um, is stable, so. So, um, but I'll be brief. Uh, this, um, the, 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 um, motion is pretty straightforward. Um, and it is, uh, designed to, um, be a committee of town meeting to address the fact that the, um, town government today operates in a, a very different environment than, um, it did, say, twenty-five years ago, um, with a decline in local newspaper circulation and coverage, um, and a rise in the use of social media platforms. Um, it comp- has complicated the ability for residents, um, to have accurate, timely information of the work of elected officials, um, at boards. Um, and is also, uh, the loss of a forum for objective reporting and dialogue in the community. Um, we have, at the same time, experienced the rise in electronic communication tools that do offer opportunities, um, for innovation, but there are also challenges associated with them. Um, equity, accessibility, um, with email, there's questions about adhering to state regulations like open meeting law, um, the need for technology, equipment, staff training, um, and resources for content creation that's up to date. Um, and then, um, the, the residents that we serve, um, as, as well as town meeting members themselves are often, um, deluged with information. And so with information overload, it can affect, um, internal and external communications and the ability to connect, um, with the residents, again, that we represent. Um, so the purpose of this committee is to, um, have the committee of volunteers, um, uh, study, uh, and review the current practices and identify any gaps that might exist. Uh, look for best practices that might exist in other towns. There are some towns that have studied this and done some things as well. Um, and there are some models we could learn from, perhaps. Um, we could also review, uh, this committee could review prior recommendations by other committees. There have been some good recommendations around communication, but, um, probably not the capacity to follow through with them. Um, this committee would also solicit import input from boards, residents, staff, and, uh, WinCam, um, through public hearings and/or written submissions as they deem appropriate, um, as well as review, uh, the roles of town meeting members themselves and the chairs, and, and whether that, uh, any of those roles could be, um, contemporized in any way to, to, again, facilitate, um, the, the, uh, connection of residents to the work of the town government. And then they, their deliverable would be, uh, to, to, uh, report to town meeting and on interim basis in the spring, um, I, verbally and/or in writing, and then in a final form by the fall of twenty-twenty-two in both written and verbal forms. And their recommendations might include draft language or motions, um, or recommendations for committees, um, or boards, uh, and, uh, any of those motions would be reviewed by rules, government regs, um, or town council. Um, so, uh, and, and, uh, ideally also, uh, include estimated staffing or budgetary impacts. Um, the committee itself would be composed of eight members appointed by the precincts. Um, one for each precinct, uh, which could be a town meeting member or, uh, or someone else that they, the precinct designates, one citizen-at-large appointed by the moderator, and three ex-officio advisory members, um, the town clerk, the town manager. And this is not in the motion, but hopefully, um, I, my plan is to attend, amend it before it goes to town meeting. Um, the, the superintendent of schools as well, uh, or, or one of their designees on their staff. Um, so I think that summarizes it. Again, the goal is, um, to facilitate, um, awareness of the work of town government, um, connect us to the residents we represent, and facilitate communication in general. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Carol. Um, all right, we're happy to take any questions. Patty, let us know if anyone has their hand up.
Pam Court does.
Go ahead, Pam.
Hi, I just, um, want to emphasize how grateful I am that, that, uh, Carol and the Select Board worked on this. Um, I wholeheartedly support and endorse it. Um, I would just ask, if perhaps in the background information, if we could just add something about the fact that the master plan recommends that, um, one of the recommendations in the master plan is for a communications officer for the town to do just these kinds of things that are described here, which is obviously, um, for funding reasons, something that is difficult for us to do. So, um, I, I think that this motion creates something that helps fulfill that need and helps us, um, fulfill the, the, something that was identified as a, a goal in the, the master plan. And so I just wanted to thank Carol for this and to just say that we, we perhaps ought to, ought to add that so that people are aware.
Great, thanks so much. Any other comments or questions on this one?
No one else.
Great. So I think we have come to the end of our presentation this evening. I want to thank everybody for joining us and for your, uh, continued engagement on this. Um, we're happy to take any questions. I'm happy to take any questions, Mary Ellen, in writing before town meeting that we might be able to help, uh, answer before then. Um, so with that, I think, uh, we'll end unless any of the other panelists here have anything to add. Okay, great. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate your time.